All right.
All right, calling this extended public hearing to order at 7:00 PM on Wednesday, August 23rd, 2023. This meeting is being recorded for transfership resuming and only the minutes and attachments, if any, will serve as the official record of this meeting. Any personal conversations should be saved until after the meeting, so everyone that's attended virtually can hear what's going on. Any board member who is a monetary interest or has a conflict, including expert communication, should disclose now, and I will ask the secretary to call the law.
Collabrow?
Yes.
Who?
Here.
So Lesnar?
Here.
Shaker?
Here.
Rubel?
Here.
In the audience are alternates Schrader, Emma Romanowski, zoning inspector Wilson, and if anybody virtual.
No trustees.
No trustees.
Okay, since we did advertise this, I'm going to ask the secretary to leave the.
The Hinkley Township Board of Zoning Appeals will hold an extended public hearing on Wednesday, August 23rd, 2023 at 7:00 PM at the Administration Building located at 1410 Ridge Road, which is on the southwest corner of the intersection of State Routes 3 and 303. Subject of the extended hearing from July 26th, 2023 is as follows. An amended application for variance AP 0275 was submitted by applicant Helen Scott Custom Builders on behalf of John and Brittany Kaminsky, property owners of 1862 Bellas Road, Hinkley, Ohio, permanent parcel number 01603C09039, requesting three variances to split 28.02 acre parcel into two lots with one parcel with the existing house not meeting the one minimum lot width at building line of 200 feet and two minimum setback of all property lines of 50 feet and three minimum side yard setback of 15 feet for existing pond. Zoning reference as amended in Chapter 6 District Regulation subsection 6R1.2.F.4, 6R1.2.F.5 and Chapter 4 General Regulation, Section 4.11. B of the Hinkley Township Zoning Regulations. How these applications notice for material will be available for public viewing from the date of this notice to the date of hearing at the zoning office located in the Administration Building at 1410 Ridge Road, Monday, 10:00 AM to 6:00 PM, Tuesday through Thursday, 9:00 AM to 2:00 PM, and Friday, 9:00 AM to noon. Information may also be found on the Hinkley website at www.hinkletwp.org under community tab, views and events to the Board of Zoning Appeals Public Hearing. All interested parties are asked to attend this hearing and send written comments to Hinkley Township Board of Zoning Appeals P.O. Box 344, Hinkley, Ohio 44223. Log into www.hinkletwp.org for Zoom option, to a list and only must be in person to speak slash participate in meeting.
Thank you. And has that notice been sent to the appropriate property owners?
Yes and yes.
Okay, excuse me, the Hinkley Township Board of Zoning Appeals acts within the authority of Section 519 of the Ohio Revised Code and exercises its powers as provided under Chapter 7 and 13 of the Hinkley Township Zoning Regulations. All public hearings are open to the public. All persons wishing to testify must do so from the podium, must be sworn in, and must identify themselves and give their residence address. This is an extended public hearing upon the application of Helen Scott Custom Builders on behalf of John and Brittany Kaminsky, property owner of the property located at 1862 Bellas Road, Hinkley, Ohio, for a lot split with three variances from the enforcement of certain Hinkley Township zoning resolution sections to property owned by the applicant. In addition to the original packet of information, the applicant has submitted a revised narrative and detail of the lot split and pond detail. Notice of the application was properly given in local newspapers and the application has been available for public review and comment. And each member of the board should have received the revised drawings and also the narrative from the applicant. If we could just quickly pull the board that everybody has the information has reviewed it.
Collabrow?
Yes.
Who?
Yes.
So Lesnar?
Yes.
Shaker?
Yes.
Rubel?
Yes.
Okay, and if I could ask the applicant to step up?
It's just, just me this week. I'm out of town for work, but, so yeah, I guess.
You've already been sworn in, so I'm not going to swear you again.
Okay. Quick summary, I guess. We were here last month and we were asking for three variances then. So we went back to the drawing board to change from three acres to seven acre lots to go for the rear lot development code to try to meet that. So our goal was to try to drop a variance at, we were, we ended up dropping the road width at the right away. Variance needing that because we meet that for the 55 feet, but what happened then? Going to the seven acre lot instead of 30 foot side setback requirements? The seven acre lot needed 50 foot side setback requirements. So our house is 54, 45.7 feet from the west property line. So before, we didn't need that variance, so that we dropped one variance and needed to add that. So it's still, the pond crosses the line, the road, the property line, the width at the building line because the house is where the house is, and then we needed the side setback now in addition, so.
Can I get a clarification?
Yeah.
You, you put this into a rear lot development, which means you would be developing a house in the rear lot.
Correct.
Which means when you did that, you'd have to take down the house up front. But it sounds like you're trying to keep the house up front and consider that with the, the requirements. I mean, can you explain exactly what you're going to do? Are you keeping that house up front?
Yeah.
Or are you going to do a rear lot development?
Yeah, that was the goal, is, is to keep the current house and then do on, with seven acres, parcel that off with seven acres. Keep that house, don't do anything other than renovate the house. And then the 21 acres that we're splitting off to build one house on that 21 acres.
Okay, so then the seven acres would not be a rear lot development.
Are you, you're not planning to build a house in the rear lot?
No, not. I'm going off the recommend.
Development if you're not planning to build a house in the back?
I'm not. I was going off the recommendations of, from our meeting to say, if we, if we increased it to, I don't know if Tom could clarify on that at all. Yeah, just going off of, we made that seven acres, then we, we did not need to decrease the right, the, we did not need a variance for the property line at the road right away. That could be 55 feet.
Well, we didn't get into a lot of detail on that because you did not meet the footage for that lot.
Okay.
But it was brought, when it was brought up about a rear lot development, that means that you would be using this access way to get to a rear lot and you'd be developing and building a house in the back. That's what a rear lot development would be. By doing what you're doing here, usually, usually I'll skim over this when I get the plans and then the day before, the day I really look into it. And I started looking into it and I started getting confused.
Okay.
And it sounded like what you're talking about right now, not what a rear lot development is.
Okay.
So really, what you're doing is just creating a larger lot and we're back to the same situation as we're trying to get a lot that we can't approve because you still have the frontage.
It's still a non-conforming.
Still non-conforming.
Okay, when we left the, yeah, so the only reason we went back to the drawing board to change from three to seven, we thought the non-conforming was the, the property line, the width at the road right away.
Correct.
Okay, so, so we can't, we can't make this a seven acre, doesn't qualify then for what we're.
It qualifies for a rear lot development and, and according to your drawing here, you have an outline where you could put a house. And when I first saw this, I thought you were looking at that 200 foot and we're looking at the drawing right now.
The new one, okay.
And that's where I thought the 200 foot was when I initially looked at this. And I, and I said, well, that's not going to work because you'd have to move that back to be in, in conformance with the line to make it 200 foot. It then dawned on me that you were acting, looking for, keeping the house until yesterday when I looked at it close and I said, wait, wait, wait a minute, it sounds like you're at, want to keep that house there.
Yeah, that, I guess.
Well, I think that, that wasn't communicated by you, the applicant, or the board didn't ask. Like, because I, that seems to be your main goal to do this.
Yeah.
To keep the house.
I think otherwise, yeah, I don't know if we would need a, I mean, for the home, we wouldn't need a variance. We would be able to fit the house on the current 28 acres if we tore this one down. Yeah, I guess that was our whole, whole intention is to parcel this off to be able to keep the, instead of tearing the home down, you know, keep it with seven acres and build a home on 21.
No matter how you look at it, that house would have to come down.
Or move.
Yeah.
Because if you kept the full, if you kept it the way it is right now, you'd have to take it down to build a new house. Right now, you'd have to take it down if you don't plan on developing a rear lot.
Okay.
I mean, if you plan on developing a rear lot, I'm sorry, you'd have to take it down. And if you're not going to take it down, it doesn't mean, we, we can't give you a non-conforming variance. So, yeah, I got confused for a while, and so I looked at this and I said,
Yeah.
I think you didn't really quite understand what a rear lot development is. That means developing.
It wasn't communicated by you that the goal, because if the goal is to split the two lots, to get two rear lots, rear lot developing lots, you can do that as long as you take the house down and you can build the house in the back.
Okay.
On the second lot, on parcel two.
Okay.
If your goal is to keep the house, we're back to the very beginning where you're, we're creating a non-conforming lot. And unless there's some hardship, extenuating circumstance that you can tell us as to why you have to keep the house.
Their intention was just, it's 28 acres, just trying to be able to put two homes on, on 28 acres.
Well, you can, you can, you can do that as you have it drawn, but you have to not take this house down and you can build in the back. That's the point of rear lot development.
What, if, this, just out of curiosity, what was the purpose for the second house? Was that something you were going to rent out or?
No, they, they, so their intention was to take the current home, renovate it, move in that while they build a home and then have that for their mother, they have a little one and have their mother live there and help with the kids and then build the house. It's going to be like 700 or 800 feet off the road, you know, back, back in the woods. That was the intention, is not to, the, the profit and sell it, it's just more, why tear down a perfectly good house that we're going to build one? 700 feet back was, you know, was there, I guess was the whole intention, but.
Unfortunately, that's, that doesn't look like that's going to work.
If you don't split it, you have to knock the house down because you can't have two, prop two homes in one lot.
So.
If you split it, you have to knock the house down and build another one in the back. For you could have two homes and have, have two lots. You can, but the house has to come down.
We, there's no possibility, I guess that's when we made application, when we talked changing it from three acres to seven, was the intention of, we would need a variance now because we're too close to the side. That's not an option for it to even.
No, because you don't need the front, frontage.
Well, we're creating a non-conforming lot, so I don't know what the purpose would be to give a variance on, on a house that you're going to knock down with that.
Yeah, I guess I shouldn't even have bothered to.
Well, see.
Yeah, get this far.
When, you know, you mentioned that they wanted to live in this house until it was built. And Tom, you can speak to this. Have you ever allowed people to live like in, in a front house until they build the house in the back and then they have to tear the house down? Have you ever had a situation like that?
Well, we, we've allowed people to, to live in an old house while they're building a new one.
Right.
Because it's just a thought that when they move into the new one, the old one would come down.
Okay, and, and see, this is the impression I, I was under, that they were going to be living in it. And then they were going to move in that new house and they were going to build a new one for their mother, mother-in-law. And that's why I came up with, this is suggestion about rear lot. And now it's, and maybe I missed it, I'm, I'm not sure. If you said you were going to remodel it, I don't recall it right off the bat, and that the mother was going to live right where the driveway is for the rear lot. And now it's, once again, non-conforming. And, you know, like you said, we're, we're right back where we were. So if you had no intentions of ever building back there and then with the variance, we give you that variance and that goes to the property forever. So anybody couldn't even then come in, tear down that house in the rear lot and then build one in the front because they have a lifetime variance there.
Yeah, but we wouldn't be giving variance, though. We wouldn't be.
I mean, if we granted the variances, we're not, I mean, we can't because it's a non-conforming lot.
Right.
It's a tough situation and we understand, but we just can't do that.
I mean, you can build two homes.
Yes.
Yeah, but you have to knock this one down.
Logic, yeah, we're just, you know, yeah, we just thought, make, yeah, make a request to try to keep an existing house versus tear one down and build one in the same location.
Build one house, then what's the point of splitting it?
Yeah, that's, yeah, our goal was to build a house and just, again, keep it because it wasn't a bad house, but, okay. All right, well.
So, that's the, that's variance one and two. So I, I don't know if you want to, we can handle it a couple of different ways. You can withdraw the two variances and go on to the third. We can.
If we can't keep the house, there's no point in even getting a variance for anything. And that wouldn't be, we're just going to end up with one house and 28 acres.
So do you want to withdraw those two variances?
Yeah, sure.
Move forward with the pond variance?
I don't even think we won't need that now.
No, because it won't be splitting.
Yeah.
Well, you know, I mean, you do have the option that if you want to split it, you can still build another home. I mean, the way, the way it's drawn, they would be two conforming lots. It's just that you would have to get rid of the existing house.
Yeah.
The way it's drawn, you've got a very small footprint.
Yeah.
To build a house. You would have to actually come back and maybe expand that.
And, and that's actually, we purposely didn't make that a huge area so someone wouldn't, you know, 30 years down the road, if they decided to sell the house up front, no one would turn around and then build all the way back like right in front of their, you know, nice new home, so.
That's good logic.
Yeah, so that was trying to just, yeah, keep the existing, okay.
Yeah, after I, after I looked at that, again, I said, I thought originally you were asking for here for the 200 foot.
Yeah.
And then I started reading it closer and I said, no, that doesn't make sense. I come up with the same solution that the chairman did.
Okay, so there's, okay, there's no option, none, yeah, existing houses got to go, okay.
If, yeah, existing house has got to go no matter which way you go, whether you keep.
Yeah, because I mean, already you have 55 feet where you're creating the 28er lot. And the other one is 136 feet. I mean, there's no way that, I mean, it would be non-conforming as it was before, it is now.
Yeah, just going back to the drawing board.
You know, it would be a conforming lot is if you're actually going to do rear lot development.
Okay.
That's the point of creating a rear lot.
Okay.
Development is to put the house in the back.
Yeah, I just.
And we can't allow to keep this house and another house, see that you can have two.
Okay.
Yeah, but I, I think, you know, it's too bad that didn't come out in the first hearing that you were planning on really keeping, because I don't, I don't remember you saying that you wanted to keep that house and renovate it. Maybe you did, but I don't remember it.
Yeah.
No, she said it.
It wasn't mentioned.
She mentioned it in the beginning that she wanted to keep the house.
Yeah, maybe it's a misunderstanding, a lot of info.
I thought it was so she could live in it while they're building the, the, the house in the back.
Yeah, I don't think anybody said what it was for, but she did say.
I might have jumped to a conclusion, but that's the way I understood it.
Okay.
We, we just recently had one like this and it was the same situation. If there's no, if there's no hardship, there are no extenuating circumstances where, you know, maybe there was an old split that, you know, put you in this situation, you know, then, then maybe we could do something with a non-conforming lot. But there's no, it makes no sense for us to approve a split with, you know, create a non-conforming lot for, just to do it.
Let me just ask you this, and I don't know if, if, I know you're going to have to talk over this with the Kaminskis, but if there's a possibility that they'd be willing to take down that house or move it and, or they want to build a new house, you, I mean, it's in front of us, at least for the pond issue. If you'd want to go for it on the pond issue, so you don't have to come back again, do you see what I'm saying?
That's why I asked, you could still, you can still get, you know, go forward with the, the lot split because I mean, they are two conforming lots. And I don't know, is it off the table that they would not want to?
I think so, because this, they kind of didn't want someone right in front of the house they're comfortable with, oh, where the house is at out front. That wouldn't affect, yeah, that's, yeah, I appreciate, yeah, bring that up while we're.
Yeah, I think it's great that, you know, just to make sure that you know all your options at this point, because it's the second time.
Yep. Okay.
You could probably still put a driveway in on the other side of the pond.
Yeah, yeah.
Without having a variance.
Okay, yeah, there's enough room there. Yeah, I mean, we're here, hey, I mean, might as well, in case they do decide they'd like to do that.
Yeah, that way you don't have to go through this again.
Do it all again, yeah. Yeah, that's, yep, yeah, then I guess it would be able to be split as drawn and.
So just to, just to make it clear, you're withdrawing the first two variances that the 50, just to make sure, the 50 foot side yard variance and the 200 foot building line variance that relate to the existing home.
Yes, correct.
Eventually that will come down if you, either way, whether you split the lot or just build.
Yep, yeah, yeah, that will have to, yeah.
All right, so then we're going to move forward with the 50 foot variance for the existing pond. Is there anybody that has anything to share about that or questions?
No.
No.
I think we covered that.
I don't have any problems with that. Tom, do you have anything to offer on that? Okay. Well, if not, then we can do the Duncan factors on the pond, on the third variance, I should say. All right, will the property yield a reasonable return or can there be a beneficial use of the property without the variance?
Rubel?
Yes.
Shaker?
Yes.
So Lesnar?
Yes.
Who?
Yes.
Collabrow?
Yes. Is the variance substantial?
Shaker?
Uh, yes.
So Lesnar?
No.
Who?
No.
Collabrow?
No.
Rubel?
No.
Will the essential character of the neighborhood be substantially altered or will adjoining properties suffer substantial detriment if the variance is granted?
So Lesnar?
No.
Who?
No.
Collabrow?
No.
Rubel? No.
Shaker?
No.
All right, will the variance adversely affect the delivery of governmental services?
Who?
No.
Collabrow?
No.
Rubel?
No.
Shaker?
No.
So Lesnar?
No.
Did the property owner purchase the property with knowledge of the zoning restrictions?
Collabrow?
I don't think so. No.
Rubel?
Uh, no, it's testified by Ms., Mrs. Kaminsky at the prior hearing.
Shaker?
No.
So Lesnar?
No.
Who?
No.
Can the problem be solved by some manner other than granting of a variance?
Rubel?
Uh, no.
Shaker?
No.
So Lesnar?
Hmm, yes.
Who?
No.
Collabrow?
No. Does the variance preserve the spirit and intent of the zoning requirement and will substantial justice be done by granting the variance?
Shaker?
Yes.
So Lesnar?
Yes.
Yes.
Collabrow?
Yes.
Rubel?
Yes.
All right. At this point, do you have a formal resolution for?
Pretty much, mostly the side yard setback of 15 feet. Yeah, that's.
Yes. Should be. Side, side and rear yard requirement of less than 15 feet, yeah, so that's, yes.
Okay.
And you have the section?
Yeah, one of them.
4.1. That one.
Okay, so that one's out.
Right.
That's out, Chapter 4.
Right.
Okay. Make a motion for a variance AP 0275 was submitted by applicant Helen Hunt Custom Builders on behalf of John and Brittany Kaminsky, property owners of 1862 Bellas Road, Hinkley, Ohio, permanent parcel 01603C09039, requesting a minimum side yard setback of 15 feet for an existing pond. Zoning reference, Chapter 4, Section 4.11.B of the Hinkley Township Zoning Regulations.
Thank you, I have a second.
Uh, could we amend that to reference the drawing? Add that to that?
Sure.
Drawing number here.
Yeah. Submitted on August 2nd, 7th, hit the date also. 8/7/23.
8/3. Is there a number of, yeah, right. 27.
27/23.
Okay, the variance will be minimum side yard setback of 15 feet for existing pond as per drawing submitted on August 7th, 2023, drawing number 2723.
Okay.
Second.
All right, so before we take a vote, a yes simple majority with a quorum present is in favor of the applicant and no simple majority or a tie vote denies the applicant's request. Uh, is everyone ready? Okay. Yes.
Who?
Yes.
So Lesnar?
Yes.
Shaker?
Yes.
Rubel?
Yes.
Right, so your variance for the pond has been granted. At this point, you have a year from the date of this hearing to begin construction or do you have to comply with request? Anyone adversely affected by this decision has 30 days from the date in which the minutes of this hearing are approved to file suit or an appeal. Meeting minutes are typically approved at the next regular meeting. Upon approval of those hearings minutes, such minutes will be posted and available at the township website. And, do you have a decision? You don't? Okay, so if we could just take a quick recess while we get that. Do you have a blank one?
I think so.
We have a blank one.
I get a blank one.
Okay, so. If nothing else, do I adjourn?
To adjourn?
No, in a second.
Second.
Jeff, so we are adjourned and.
You're gonna take a roll call? Are we all?
All in favor, say hi.
Hi.
All right, we are adjourned at seven thirty-two PM.